Just always got it like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did always have it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we quit because, uh, come in. I leave and make my head because I was too cheap to pay.
Oh, no.
The boys. And I, I leave and they bought shades, which was needed. Which is lucky better for the microphone. Hello? Yes.
Would this setup be better for the microphones? That has pushed down?
No. Not using those other microphones.
There's a green one on Lawrence. Oh, that's a very good one. No, we're not.
I trust my, I trust my AV man in the back. My AV crew. Ready? Okay, it is 2:30. Let's call the special meeting to order. It is Thursday, March 20th at 2:30 PM. Please join me at the. The flag is the back. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We'll talk, please. Sue? Rudy here.
Lori.
Here.
John.
Here.
You're right here.
We have a board.
Very good. Board member conflict of interest statement.
None?
None.
Performed.
Public comment on agenda items? Public comment closed, 2:31. Approval or do we have any amendments to the, uh, meeting agenda? No. Approval of meeting agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ananas? First item is the water agreement amendment of, and the Mead Hunt Water Operator Agreement, that these both pertain to MGD out at Commerce Park. So we need a motion to amend the original agreement, which was signed October of 2024, by the previous board and the, and to review the water operator agreement. I will make that motion. I would motion that we amend the original agreement, that was signed by the previous board, and review the water operator agreement. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Uh, discussion. The wa, the original agreement that was signed in October is attached. The amendment, um, requires MGD to be the contracted party. And because they are connecting to the well that is, we, that the township has put in for the use of the wastewater treatment plant, it is highly recommended by District Health Board that a water operator be hired. That agreement is there as well from Mead Hunt. Tammy Gollum has put that proposal together. She's known to us. Um, again, it was highly recommended that we have a water operator. So the amendment is.
I, I printed it off at home.
Oh, but.
And then, okay, I wrote that on the phone.
Okay. So the parties seek to supplement the agreement, um, to provide clarity as to the connection, the installation and maintenance of the water. Uh, system is described in the agreement. This is, MGD will pay a one-time connection fee, which is $4,400. They'll pay it upfront. Uh, that is the, the amount of the contract for the water operator. They're gonna pay that upfront, okay? And then we'll turn around. The township is contracted with Mead Hunt, since we own the well. MGD will pay the, the water operator fee of 200 months for, what is that, 22 months? Well, December 31st of 2026. Uh, they'll pay that upfront. We'll turn around and pay the contract to Mead Hunt, okay? And Mead Hunt will have all the. I'm sorry. You're okay.
I was, yeah, the one at home was all marked up, so I apologize. I didn't think.
No, no, don't zip it. Do you need a moment?
No.
Okay. So Mead Hunt will prepay that. We, the township will turn around and pay the contract to Mead Hunt. Like, Mead Hunt Water Operator Contract will be good is the period is April 1st of 2025 to end at December 31st, 2026, $200 a month. There is call-out fees, um, at 90 an hour. And we will bill that as, if, as it occurs. Mead Hunt will hold the additional water testing that's required because we have a second party on the well. It's to protect the township as well as Mead Hunt's customers.
So should we record, so they've said, we're gonna turn around and pay Mead Hunt. So MGD is going to pay township upfront and the township will.
Yes.
Pay that money to.
Correct. So we're, yeah, exactly. That's exactly how it would happen.
And then at the end of, yeah, 4,400, if there's, then we negotiate again?
Well, at the end of that contract here, starting in October, then we, we will renegotiate the contract, but the water reimbursement. So this is for the water operator. And then we will bill them, I believe, the contract signed in October said quarterly. No, we don't like. Yeah, quarter. $6 per thousand, yes, as agreed to in the October, signed October contract.
But the, because that's on the ongoing, um, contract that we're gonna have to have was, um, Mead, I'm not Mead Hunt. Mead, yeah, Mead Hunt.
Yes.
But it's a one-time connection fee. And then they, when that, that's for period, sorry, no, I can get it.
April 1st to December 31st of 26, April 1st of 25 through December of 26. We'd ask them to prepay that contract, that water operator contract.
And then at the end of that, we, we have to, um, get them to continue to pay that.
Yes, when you, we begin the renegotiation. Yeah, yes. Um, and the stipulation in the contract is, in the amendment, is that, um, we would renegotiate for a water supply operator with at least the same qualifications as Mead Hunt offers. And those people that we are. The amendment also goes on to say that, um, MGD will agree to follow any rules, um, as amended from time to time by District Health Number Four or the State of Michigan or the United States Agency with similar oversight. And we will engage in reasonable best efforts on an ongoing basis to ensure ongoing compliance with such rules and decisions of lawfully designated regulatory or governing authority over the parties' use of the well. And there's gonna be a meter at the well to our, on our condos? There's a, so there is a, yes, there is, the short answer is yes, there's a meter. They have a small, um, wellhouse building, uh, attached to the back of one of their, their large buildings.
Okay.
In the, in there is a meter, but there will also be a, what's referred to as a puck on the outside, so the meter is readable from the outside. We don't have to enter their facilities at all. Um, and that will be Township, Parks employees who, who currently do our meter reading for a select number of.
Small.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then that will be billed up quarterly at the rate agreed to in that original. Okay, contract. Do you have a question, the Congress?
If they already have the, um, the reader, we have the.
We have, we have the reader and they put in a meter that is, um, compatible. Yeah.
So I'm certainly not against any of this, maybe it is not, it's great that, you know, there's more business out there, more housing coming in, more growth. Um, we've already saw maybe, you know, with MGD, Mr. Keira and.
Frank Hoblitz.
Hoblitz, you know. Speaking at some of the other meetings and, you know, so I think this would have been an issue, but what happens in October of 2026 when they say, well, we can't come to an agreement with the Township on water use. Shut the water off.
Well.
Do we go to Austin? Do we, I guess, we can't walk into the future like that, but.
Planning.
But have to.
Exactly. In, in the original agreement, there is a termination, uh, point, there you go, thank you, number six. A termination, um, if they, if, if it was determined that we couldn't come to an agreement and we couldn't, there is an escape clause, as I refer to it, where you have to give proper notice. I believe it's 180 days. Uh, and we could not shut off their water, and we would not do that anyway, but until such time as they were able to, um, have a plan to provide their own water. One of the concerns I had was they have in their, in their design, in MGD's plan, was to have 54 units out there. My concern was we didn't want to have 54 different agreements. We wanted one agreement with the developer. And so, um, that's this. And, and they can work out within their development, however, they're going to monitor water usage within each individual. Skill. This is, this is the fact. Who says the fact? Oh, okay, thank you. Such notice shall be given fewer than 365 days prior actual written notice of such termination. Well, and then number three, they talk about agreement will not be terminated for any reason except upon 180-day prior actual delivery of written notice. Yeah, well. But again. More diligence in, in negotiating. Any other comments or questions?
It's all about the way.
Yes, yes, with the weather well up until a couple of days ago. Well, this morning, um, the weather was such that they're anxious to get going, and we can understand that, but, um, yeah, we have to make sure that we're protecting the well, which is, was.
Then correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but the well was put in for the treatment plant, which was put in for the original well. And then, um, the three or four, we did an ordinance, um, that covered, there was three or four parcels that it covered. Because of possible contamination from the sewer plant. So there was a radius around, um, that. And, um, those other, um, parcels ended up purchasing something different, so they handed over now. So, yeah, that's what this was. And after, limited number of parcels.
Right, and this one was not included in that. And that is out there. I think it's on the website. Um, anyway. I think that's it. Yeah, they're anxious to get going. Um, we do have the water ordinance out there. This parcel was not included in that. And as we recall, MGD got caught up in the, they had broken ground on their development. And then realized, as I understand, that then realized there were underground fuel storage tanks at the business next door, which encapsulated their entire, you know, area.
Is it the whole, um, property, piece of property?
I'd have to get it. Have this out, but, yeah. And, and, you know, there were other, there was an option. There were a couple of other options which did not appeal. And this was, again, this is an agreement that we inherited, so. And request of that. Okay, any other comments? Do we want to? We'll call hold on this. Frank.
Hi, Sue?
Yes.
We had, yeah, we had a motion today. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Lori?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And the next item is the Township, Tusker Township Community Cleanup Day. Always popular.
Very helpful.
Yes, it is very helpful. I participated last year and it seemed to be well received. It was held at the, well, let's put the motion on the table first. So, Community Cleanup Day, we're looking to set a cleanup day date, um, and the times. And to be, uh, our vendor will be packed, sanitation incorporated. They were the same vendor last year, on our way. We'll hold it out at the Campbell Pratt Airport, September 13th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May we have a motion? I guess I can make that motion, if anything's.
And that's, and that's September?
Yes, it's the first Saturday after Labor Day.
Yeah, that's what it's next, okay. I'll support that.
Okay. So, the motion on the table is that we set the date of September 13th, which is a Saturday, the first Saturday after Labor Day, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, out at the airport, pack sanitation will come in from on way. And if you went last year, they have, you didn't even need to get out of your car. They just opened the back or opened your tailgate and hauled all your stuff and put it in the appropriate buckets and bins and trailers and sent you on your way.
Did they check on residency?
Yes, okay, yes. There was a welcome table and I provided my, uh, driver's license, that was confirmed, and, um, then from there, I, I was in and out. I think I waited in line with three cars behind me. And, um, I was in and out within probably 20 to 30 minutes.
Was there a, any restriction on it? Or is that builders coming in with?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe they do have, um, they.
Must be household items, points of furniture, household trash. No demolishing materials, all new, new machinery.
And I guess if we, you know, it looks, it appears that they accept tires. For additional costs.
Yeah. Yeah. Do we pay for that?
That's what it looks like. I would not be inclined to pay for that. Refrigerators, air conditioning, yeah, no. They can pay separately for that.
Yeah, just make sure that this. I don't know what, what's done with, um, asked.
We can ask them. Uh, I didn't see that contract.
Two questions.
Yep.
A, are there any other companies, GFL, you know, some of the old trash companies, uh, BBB, uh, Waste Management that offer the same service? And if Joshi would have a, a request for proposal, I guess we would.
Well, that's a good question.
Much to, Lori wanting to do a Saturday.
Oh. And then that, uh, you know, what do people do is they have in commitments, and, you know, that's considered, you can't bring that.
No.
But she, she would, she would, she would, she would, they have their.
I don't know, I guess, my recommendation is not till September, maybe, so I don't request for that.
So for the motion, set the date, not necessarily though.
I'm gonna.
Well, that was, I think, part of PAC's issue was there weren't many dates available, that they, people were setting dates a year in advance. They won't hold the date, I don't know. No, they won't hold the date. Well, what do we want to do? Do we, do we want to put a request for proposal out, or, uh, what were some of the, GFL, Triple D, what were, somebody else mentioned.
I don't know Waste Management, so I don't get there.
GFL, that's what I, um.
Yes, my opinion, I'd use a homework on it, table it.
Just here, the April.
Just the April meeting.
Okay.
If no success comes out of it, then we will.
Do you, um, do you think, under the job description, Jonathan, that that provides sufficient guidance for a, a request of it? Do you want, do we want to have them include tires and freon, but at the expense of the resident, or you say not at all?
Yeah, I think that, that's another thing we need to make sure is that they're willing to charge the people who come in there.
Right, right.
Sorry, I mean, but I don't think it.
No, we would have to pose something for the citizens, and you can bring this back, but you have to, we have to case the children, so. Okay, the first, the personal experience, half is who I go with, and they're the cheapest around. I don't think you're gonna, I mean, so, let's check it out, but I, I don't think you're gonna find something less expensive than that. And they'll, like, if you leave two chairs out or a mattress at your house, you just call them. They'll come and get it on your trash day and they charge like minimal enough compared to some other. So, just go where it's worth.
I just wanna be, make sure these others, you know, they're like, years ago, um, Verlake Reservation covered the cost of tires. Well, so I don't think we consider that again.
Well, I thi, I, I think it's worthy of an ask, but do we want to, um, set a date and find a vendor first before we ask? But then do we?
I just wanna make sure that the vendor is, and they, the day will charge people.
Right, right, well.
Christian, that's what happened this year?
And I don't remember seeing any of that, but I, again, I was in and out so quickly. Yeah, and I saw that theirs was in June, but I could do that. Okay, okay, um, be nice to, if, if several of Townships banded together, maybe we could get economies of scale. Another, another conversation to have. Not this year, it's too late, we're, we're, we're registering in summer, but in the future, maybe. Okay, so, the motion on the table is to set the community cleanup day. We want to table that, or do we want to vote on that, turn it down and do a little amendment further?
Table it. Maybe we want to get more information on different companies and more information on the extra items that.
Okay.
Make sure that we take care of the, because we, like, if we do go with how we don't, that's like, that's our.
And we may, yeah, and we may buy it, but that's a, that's a, that's a risky thing.
Okay, I have a question. Since they've gone back to having the community cleanup day, are they still doing the anytime cleaner vouchers? Because that would, that's a double. They had gone to the anytime cleaner vouchers because we were having difficulties, um, monitoring whether it was just local residents or not. And so that, just to bring a little history, and that is why we're going to the anytime cleaner vouchers. But if you're back to offering this again, why continue the anytime cleaner vouchers?
I can't answer that. Were they, did they, did the anytime, how did they work? Where did they work? How did they work? Did they have an expiration?
If you come one, two, or no, one, double per residence for thirty years.
Frisked a year, yeah.
That's.
And the township paid that?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know? We probably don't know about research. How many of those we had issued in the past to do a cost comparison?
We have to look, it's, this one we got one.
Yeah, yeah, this one. I mean, it's not that we get that many, um, and that's why you, like, the anytime cleaner vouchers, but, um, I just think it's, like, a little bit of a state.
Well, it might be, but then again, if you're not here on cleanup day, um, I don't disagree.
And it's, it's just something different.
Yeah.
And I think you can take, can you take your household batteries under that door? I think you can take them to Emma, but I don't think you can take them back.
Correct. So we'll, so the request, let me jump, shit, sorry. So the request for proposal, they're saying, uh, this one at least, if we're gonna use this as a template. Do we want them to specifically batteries, household? You know, what's, what?
Paint.
Yeah.
Hazard, I think that's what hazardous waste.
Yeah.
Items are, I think that's the painting, you know.
So maybe you have, um, define that if they need you. And maybe I'm. I'm being too picky.
It doesn't say that there's no paint. I'm thinking that they, oh, good, the paint and the hazardous waste. I think that needs to be discussed.
We need to, yeah, we seem to have to find that. Okay. Okay, so, we, we want to table this motion to the April meeting. We'll put it out for proposal. We have at least a few in the air, a few, um, companies in the area that may or may not be interested. We could reach out to them and say, hey, do you do Saturdays? And we'll have that back by, what's it, April 1st? That only gives us. What's that? Yeah. Send them time?
Yeah, well, you, it's, it's gonna be both either, they're not gonna be on Saturdays.
Right, exactly. All right, so we'll have it come back. Right, yeah, right, okay. Phone? Phone number? By April 1st. We'll ask for some clarifications on what's hazardous waste. And if they, if, will they do a Saturday? That's the primary thing. No residents. Or tires. Freon. And I think last year, um, Bob Kramer was out there at the Welcome Tent and he did verify my ID that I was a resident, so. What is.
I think all the.
Worked the whole day, yeah. Okay, so what happens if somebody shows up and they're not from here? Yeah, we can.
Because they're trying, because they, they don't let somebody into the other township, so.
I guess I'd say maybe unless they provide, you know, this is or something.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, they should done tax bills or something like that. Oh, yeah, I got, yeah.
So maybe. Post.
It's for, it's for all.
Secondary home.
It's for, for. It's for, for any property over, is that for vacant land?
And again, that's where we want to look at that, the excluded items.
Yep.
Yeah, because it says on the brush, these press papers, so if somebody, whether it's an empty lab or a summer home, you can clean up your yard, you just clean your, all the well, they got around to it.
Right.
And then we'll look into those anytime vouchers, just out of curiosity.
I mean, it's not that why they don't spend, right?
Okay, last time when I was the office assistant, we had a lot of cards.
We're printing them? Or we have them?
Well, and I know they, they do that at the rest center. They offer that service, that would just help, but we've already, do you do that with supporting them? Anytime voucher? Or does it go to task?
Those are, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to set the cleanup day. We're going to do an RFP on that, get some date, ask some more questions. And so for now, we're going to table this motion to set the date. Right? Do we have a second on that? Okay, and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Public comments.
I was sitting on that seat.
No public comments, board comments. Done?
I like this setup.
You like this setup? Okay, it is 3 o'clock?
Motion passed.
Thank you. Sorry, John, I told you 15 minutes.
I was just gonna say.
He's on there like...